Okay, we have a quorum. There's Paula popping in now. So we have enough members to conduct business of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Thank you all for your patience. We will be going back into executive session at the end of this meeting. And we will return to regular only to adjourn the meeting. So first item on the agenda after what we just discussed in executive is the FY21 budget. So I just wanted to bring people through a little bit of how our budget was developed at the beginning of the year. So starting back in 2019, Superintendent and I did meet with all three towns. We talked about the fiscal outlooks for the three communities and expectations of Chapter 70 funding. On January 9th, 2020, the Superintendent brought us the administrative version of the budget, which came to $26,748,000 for a 2.91% increase. The recording was off? Okay. It seems to be on and functioning now, right? So that was not our final budget number. Working further with the finance committees of the three towns and the selectmen of the three towns and in cooperation with our administrators, we looked at some further reductions and finally voted our budget for FY21 on March 12th, the last time we were all physically together in the room. And that budget came out as $26,698,578 for an annual increase of around 2.71%. This number was allotted by all three of our communities. It was a difficult number for the committee to come to because this did involve some staffing cuts already in our budget process to get to the 2.71%. And then we didn't go back to school the next day and the world changed. And the financial future of the state of Massachusetts and our three communities became murky and extremely unclear. In resulting times, we've been approached by all three communities at this point to look at our budget and to act as frisically, prudently as we could to try and offer some relief to our three towns. Kingston gave us an actual number to help reduce their assessment. And what that means is there's really four places our money comes from for our schools. There's state aid and state aid makes up about 30% of our budget. Last year, we got about $7.3 million in state aid. The rest of the money in our budget is made up by the three communities. And the way it is assessed is based on how many students they have and the wealth of the community, which is determined by the Department of Revenue based on average personal income of the residents and the average assessed value of the properties. So the state actually tells each of the towns what their contribution is going to be through an assessment. Kingston needed its number to go down by $525,000 in order for them to balance their own local budget, which, no, $300,000, excuse me, for their assessment, which would result in a $500,000 reduction from Silver Lake. This does not take into account that Chapter 70 might be cut as well. This is only taking into account that the local towns might have cuts from their locally aid package. If we also receive Chapter 70 reductions, the number 525,000 will not be enough to satisfy even a 1% or a 2% reduction in our Chapter 70 funding. Again, a 1% reduction in Chapter 70 funding would result in another $73,000 we would need to cut from our budget. There's different projections all over the place. If anyone tells you they know what Chapter 70 is going to be reduced by, they're making up numbers. They're just, they're guessing. I've heard things from 4% all the way up to 15%. And there's also the hope that people are holding on to that the governor and the legislature will cut everything else but level fund Chapter 70. We don't know. So our job here tonight is to come up with a budget that our business manager has to submit to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by June 1st. In case we go to 112 budgets. And a 112 budget would happen in the case that two of our three towns don't vote our budget by June 30th. It would be then based on a 112 budget that the state would kind of send a bill out to everyone and everyone would pay on a monthly basis at that point. So this is the work that we're trying to do remotely without being able to look into each other's eyes, across the table, to feel that body language and nuance. As many of you who are teaching online realize already, preaching to the choir, you can't really get that sense of where people are coming from as clearly as you could. We're all sitting at the table together. So not trying to make excuses for us, but we're just trying to convey to you the difficulty of the situation we find ourselves in and the different parameters we're working with tonight. So would anybody from the committee like to chime in at this point? All right. Gordon Andrews, go ahead, Gordon.
So I just wanted to comment on, so a 15% reduction in total state aid would be a $1.2 million reduction. That's what Kingston is using for their evaluation of state aid is a 15% reduction in their total. The town of Halifax is approximately an 8% reduction. So we've heard numbers from the state of, from a $44.6 billion budget, that they're looking anywhere from a $4 billion reduction to an $8 billion reduction in state tax revenue. The state tax revenue actually is only about $29 billion of the budget. The rest of the money is made up from non-tax revenue sources. So if we're looking at 8 billion out of 29 billion, we're in serious issues and that's more than the 15%. And I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that the further this pandemic goes, the worse that those cuts are going to be for the state revenue tax money.
Yeah, and Gordon, like I said, nobody knows the actual numbers yet, but a lot of good people are putting their heads together to try and come up with numbers that make sense. And I've heard some of those same figures myself. But we do have the power to amend our budget when we get further information. So we might be coming back to the table. I hope to God we're not potentially looking at another billion dollars off of what we take off tonight. You know, but I think we need to approach this one step at a time, one piece at a time, with the information we have at hand right now. And then we can cross the bridge of what state aid looks like once they actually give us numbers. You know, the relief they gave everybody by making income tax not due until July 15th is really set them up against a wall for giving us actual numbers. So the state is still waiting on all of their income tax revenue for this year and won't know what it looks like until after July 15th, which is one of the reasons why we're seeing such a delay in their budget numbers for us this year. Eric, I saw you wanted to speak next, go ahead.
Yes, so I just wanted to give some input and I guess make a request. So if we were to go back to last year's budget numbers, we would need to cut roughly $706,000 out of our budget. The town of Kingston and Halifax, based on their own numbers, they are, sorry, Kingston and Plimpton are looking for a cut that would translate to a $525,000 cut to our budget. If we cut the full 706, then the assessment would be 706, not the 525. And I would like us to make sure that if we do make that cut, that we keep the assessment cut only at the 525, which is what the towns are asking. And that that additional roughly $180,000 would be a projected decrease in state aid that we think we are going to get. So that if we, if the aid is not decreased, we would get that money back and it wouldn't be going through the towns where we would have to go back through town meeting to get that money back. Basically, what I'm saying is I only want to give the towns what they're asking for right now, but I realize we need to make deeper cuts. So, and I know this is completely unique and we already mentioned this to Christine, but I really want us to look into if whatever cut we make, that the actual assessment reduction to the towns is only the 525 total. That's just my opinion. I know everybody else has different opinions.
I think it's an interesting idea since the 525 and cuts is purely for assessment reasons at this point and doesn't take into account any potential cut in state aid for us under Chapter 70. So we'll give Christine some time to dig into that, maybe make a couple of phone calls to Desi to see if that's permitted and we'll also wrap Fred, our legal counsel, into that conversation to see if we have that leverage to make that happen. Is there anybody from the committee who is against us pursuing that potential idea? If you are against that idea, can you please chime into the chat and let us know why? So Eric, it seems like the committee supports that idea. I know I do as well. It's an outside the box idea at this point and I think it's something we need to pursue. So what Eric has brought up and what I've brought up and to this point, what Gordon has also brought up is the FY20 number. So let me just bring us back to what our FY20 budget number was. Our FY20 budget number was $25,992,354. And I will repeat that just so we can wrap our heads around it. It's roughly 26 million, but the exact number is 25,992,354. The budget that we voted again on 3/12/2020 was 200, no, 26,698,578. And that's not the exact number. That was just my back of the napkin math, which would mean we would have to reduce our budget potentially by $706,000, $706,000 instead of the 525. Is there anybody from the committee who is adverse to us using the $706,000 number instead of the $525,000 number for this evening's discussion? If so, please chime in at the chat and let us know why you would be for or against us using the $706,000 number. And again, if you're for it, please chime in as well and just explain why. So people from the general public can more fully understand where we're coming from and what we're up against at this point. So Eric, you support the 706? Do you want to go further into why or do you want to see if someone else from the committee would like to?
You know, the only thing I'll say is that, you know, and I think we've said this a number of times. I feel like we're blindfolded throwing, you know, darts at a wall here because we don't know the numbers. What we're doing is we're looking at what other school committees are doing. We're hearing all kinds of numbers. We're hearing that state aid is going to be reduced anywhere from nothing to 15%. As Gordon mentioned earlier, a 15% cut is 1.2 million. That's above and beyond the 525 that we have to cut. So that brings it closer to 2 million, which is absurd. So we're really taking a shot in the dark and that's why I said for the 525, we only give the assessment, what the towns are asking for, what they need, give that back. And the rest is just an anticipated cut of the state aid. Because again, we don't know. I mean, the feds could chime in, they could come in and have another stimulus bill that will pump money back in for education or municipal aid in general. But looking at other towns around the state, most people are voting this 112 budget for Desi as their prior year's budget. They're not going deeper than that. I don't know of any districts that are not cutting enough. So we're kind of taking a shot in the dark.
And just to make things even more clear in regards to what some other districts are doing, there are some organizations, there's the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, also known as MARS. And they're not recommending anybody go below their FY20 number at this point because they feel, again, they're being put up against artificial constraints. And MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees, is also encouraging people at this point not to go below their FY20 number until we have more information from the state. So Gordon, please feel free to chime in. I know you support the $706,000 in cuts and have something else to say. Then Paula, we can come on to you.
So at this point, all the relief packages that have been talked about have not included lost tax revenue. So if the state loses tax revenue, which is what their forecast, we will have to make further reductions. And you know, that as bad as that 15% number sounds, it could be real.
Yeah, and you know, we've already spoken about if we need to come back to amend the budget lower when those numbers come in, we have the ability to do that. We also have the ability to come back to the table if the federal monies do come through and they directly impact our school to revise the budget upwards as well. So it's a two-way street. At this point, we haven't heard much from our federal friends and I am in constant communication with our delegation down in DC. But if you think that we deliberate things in a slow and methodical way, it's nothing compared to what happens down in DC even during an emergency. So go ahead, Gordon.
Just one other point I wanted to bring up is the Speaker's office has said they will not release numbers before June 30th. So we are looking at not knowing what we're doing going forward for at least a month. And that was at a minimum. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention.
Yeah, thank you, Gordon. I appreciate that. And that's the same information I got from Speaker DeLeo's office last week. So it seems like he's being pretty consistent. I know lots of people are pressuring him to give a number. And he says he refuses to give a number if it's not going to be a real number, which I respect, but at the same time, it's going to be at least another month until we have legitimate numbers we can work with to build a real budget. But yet they're asking us to give them a budget by June 1st. So Paula, thanks for waiting patiently. It's your turn.
And I don't have a lot to add other than I think tonight is just phase one, sadly enough. I think the 706 is phase one and we will have to come back to the table. To talk about any amount less than that tonight is really not being realistic. We can't stick our head in the sand. None of us like what's happening, but we've been charged with dealing with this where the school committee members from the three towns, like it or not, this is the job we signed up for. And again, I think tonight is just phase one. This 706 sounds like a big number. It is going to be bigger sadly. So let's, we just, we got to deal with it. Again, emotions off the table. We just have to, we have to deal with it from a, you know, mathematical, business, you know, student perspective.
Jason, I have a question for tonight.
Go ahead, Gordon.
Can we vote just the FY20 budget number tonight?
So we can, but again, you know, I heard what John said about us stepping up and putting our two cents in. And I understand why it could feel like we're maybe not asserting ourselves in this budgetary process. But we have looked at the proposed cuts and I know that many of us have had a lot of conversations individually with the superintendent. And I know a few of us also have some pretty strong feelings. We'd like to be able to exchange with each other about where we think that money should be coming from. We could vote that number tonight, Gordon, but we need to at least give Christine some direction of how to set that budget up because it needs to be a legitimate budget that we can live with if we end up with a 112. And God forbid something happens at one of the town meetings or one of the town meetings doesn't happen. That's our real budget. So I do think we need to slow down at a point tonight. We need to look at the list of items and we might need to give a little bit more direction through the superintendent and the administrative staff before we adjourn from tonight's meeting. So I know that might even mean we all just kind of take a pause and we go back to our email and we look at that list. But I think it's only fair to Christine and it's only fair to the members of the public that we give some direction tonight. Okay, so Eric, did you say you had something? Go ahead.
Yeah, and this is a question for Gordon because this was discussed during negotiations too. A question basically about the town meetings. So there's some thought, and Gordon, I'd like for you to talk to the rest of the school committee and in public, if you don't mind about this, but Halifax doesn't seem to have a push to have their town meeting. Kingston and Plimpton do. The problem is we're putting out numbers and this, I think everybody agrees with me that we're taking a shot in the dark. We're throwing numbers out. We don't know what Chapter 70 is. I don't know the damage that could be done to our system if we take a vote on numbers and then Chapter 70 is so much different. You know, we don't have formal agreements with the town to get, to improve our budget, to get some of the funding back if the town gets more money back into their coffers. There's been a lot of conversation about why don't we wait at least on the school budgets until we know what Chapter 70 and other state aid is really going to be. So Gordon, I'd love for you to talk a little bit about what you had talked to me about.
Okay, so sure. My mic?
You're on, go ahead.
So I would request we ask the towns to vote no to our budget. So it gives us another 30 days from their town meetings in two weeks because Kingston and Plimpton are scheduled to have their town meetings. Halifax is going to push off.
Someone sharing their screen? You might not want to be doing that.
Tracy Keller.
You're sharing your screen? There you go. All right. Sorry, Gordon, go ahead.
So I would think it would be in everyone's best interest where we don't have the numbers to ask the town meetings to vote no to our budget. So that would give us another 30 days from that point for us to come up with another budget, which would force another town meeting. But I think looking at having to have all town meetings. Halifax is scheduled for June, but I'm pushing as a member of the selectmen to have the meeting pushed to at least July and possibly into August if we don't have numbers. So I think if we had the town meetings vote no to our budget, whatever the number is that we present, it would give us another 30 days to have another school committee meeting. If we have further updated information, we can vote a new budget. If we don't, we can always vote the budget that we vote tonight. They can have another town meeting, reject it, and we could go out another 30 days.
I think my head's going to explode and it's not, it's not a valid idea. It's just so outside the box and I wasn't anticipating or prepared for that at all. I know that Paula chimed in that she thought that was interesting. And Paula, as our journeyman member of the committee, any thoughts on? I'm not saying we have to do it. And Gordon, it gives us another option and we could even have some time to think about that before we tell the towns what we want to do with it. Paula, do you have any strong feelings about that idea or we just appreciating the outside the box thinking?
I am just appreciating the outside the box thinking. It's brilliant. It's a very interesting idea. I think it solves some of our problems.
Yeah, again, I'm going to have to sit on that one and let it stew for a minute. I'm not willing at this point to say what I want to do, but it's definitely a valid option and it gives us a little bit more choice in our own, in our own feet than we would have otherwise. So very interesting idea.
Do you want to open it up to Kingston Finance Committee if they have a comment? Or do you just want to keep this school committee right now?
Well, you already, you already opened it up in a way to Gordon in his role as selectman. So I would be interested to hear from the finance side, how a town would react to that at this point. And then we can know whether or not it's something we even want to keep on the table. So yes, through me as the chair, I will take any comment from Carl Pike if you would like to make one at this point.
Good evening. I really don't think that I'm in a position now to comment one way or another because this is a total new idea for me and I just don't feel qualified to say or to represent the town's position.
I think that's totally fair, Eric, considering I feel basically the same way that you just eloquently described. But thank you, Carl. Appreciate that.
So Jason?
Go ahead, Gordon.
So if the towns failed to hold the town meeting, our budget would pass.
Right, by default, it would pass if the town failed to hold the town meeting, right? Would we run into the potential problem though, Gordon, of state taking over our finance if we don't have an established budget that's been voted by the towns by December?
Yes, but I'm assuming that by August, we're going to have legit Chapter 70 numbers.
Okay, so.
You muted yourself?
I'm sorry, I muted myself. I just want to make it clear to everyone who might not be as familiar with how school financing works in Massachusetts. So the 112 budgets by default can only occur for a certain amount of time. So Gordon has bought us some time. But eventually, usually around December or January, if towns hadn't taken up their school budget, the state takes over determining what that budget is. We lose all local control over the budget. But that wouldn't happen for several months and it would still give us some wiggle room. I have another journeyman town official who has some serious concerns about the towns not taking up another town meeting, which is a valid concern that we need to consider. It does cost the towns money to have additional town meetings. I know that for my town, it's the least amount of money, but it still costs us about $20,000 sometimes depending on the timing and what we need. Do any of you know how much it costs your town to put together a town meeting? No.
No.
It's not free. Let's just put it that way. So approximately 10 grand. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Five for Halifax.
Okay, so right, so the grand total for all three towns is about $20,000 combined money if we ask them to come back just to take up something for the schools, which I really think considering the situation we're in. And if this is the education of their children in the schools of their community, I think we would be able to get them to come back to the table in September to do that. So yeah, we'd have to go social distancing. Good points, Mary. I appreciate that. We're all intending with that right now and just trying to come up with some interesting solutions to the problem. So does anyone else from the committee have any clever ideas or interesting ways that we can continue to move on to tonight's business? Okay, so what I'm going to propose to you now is that we actually vote the number to establish our budget. And then we actually take a couple of minutes to look at the list of items and we start giving Christine some guidance as to where to take those funds from. Now, I just want to make this perfectly clear. In order for a budget to pass, we need to have two-thirds of the votes of the entire committee, not two-thirds of the votes of who's here tonight. Two-thirds of the votes voting affirmative creates a regional school budget. So that would mean nine votes. And just to remind everyone, am I right? No, is it 11 votes? Please, is 11 votes for the two-thirds for us? We're out of 16?
I believe it's 11.
Thank you very much. So I just want to remind you for the purposes of voting, I am just one vote. Members from Halifax are two votes and members from Kingston are also two votes. Mike Anton and myself from Plimpton, we only count for one vote. So we would need 11 affirmatives to pass a budget. So I will make a motion right now that we accept as our FY21 budget number, the total of $25,992,354, which is equal to our FY20 budget number. Do I have a second?
Second, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you just a quick?
Mr. Chair, may I ask you just a quick procedural question?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Lesley Ann.
I'm just wondering of the members that are present tonight, how many potential votes is that? I'm just, I can't see everybody's faces.
We have enough to get 11, but if there's dissent, it will be very close to the edge. So we have Paula, Chris, Gordon, you and Eric, right, who each get two votes. So that's 10 and then me and Mike, who would be 12. So if anybody from Kingston or Halifax votes no, this budget does not pass. If Mike and I both vote no, this budget does not pass. So we're right up against the edge. And that's why I made it clear. I I just want to make sure we're doing everything above board. It's two thirds of the total votes of the committee, not two thirds of the total votes present. And this will be done in a roll call. So Mike.
Jason.
Gordon, for the comment before we go ahead.
Before we do this. Are we going to discuss where we where we think the budget should be that's presented to us? Or are we going to talk about that after the fact?
I'm open up to the committees committees determination on that. I I was of the mind of let's get the number done and then we can come back and look at it. But if you would feel more comfortable voting a number after we give Christine some guidance, I am totally open to that as well.
So I guess I, because we had negotiations today and we have a result from that. That that affects the budget. And and the FY21 versus FY20. So I didn't know if we have to talk about that or is that direction that we give to Christine? I I don't have a preference either way. I just want to know how to go about it.
Again, we would just have to take. We would have to take the budget that we had voted probably on 312. Which was the 26,698,000. And and pull 706,000 from it or or as close as we can get to it and then leave the rest of it in the discretion of the administration. So I don't think we have to necessarily go down to the penny here. But I think we do owe it to Christine and to Jill, give them some sort of guidance at this point of of even categories and percentages of that 706 where we wanted to come from. Eric?
So getting back to what I had said earlier about the assessment. So I do not want to support this budget if that entire 706 is going back to the assessment to the towns. So do we need to add that to our motion when we're cutting this? Or is this is that just direction to Christine when she's putting together the assessments for the town?
Christine, if we give you, if we give you an exact number. Do you have to then break it down per the way the state describes it? Is there a formula or can we give you that direction tonight and then we can find out from Desi and Fred if that's legal? That's kind of what we're asking, right, Eric?
Yes.
My understanding is that I would need the number for the budget. That's one component. Then the other component is that I then need to calculate the assessments. And many of those items are based just on my best estimate, my assumptions. So I think if we decided to take the view that we believe chapter 70 and regional transportation will be impacted next year. And we will reduce our expected revenues by that amount. I think that would satisfy adjusting the state revenue by the 180 something thousand. And then that'll trend the rest of the balance, reduction of the budget will then translate into reductions for the town for their assessment.
I'm satisfied with that if we're giving her that direction.
Eric, do you want me to amend my motion then?
If we don't need it, then I don't think so, just as long as everybody agrees with that direction to Christine to to follow.
All right. And just just so you know, we had some questions from the committee. Do we have to rescind our March vote voted budget? And Lisa is a great parliamentarian and I'm pretty good too. I think if we make this amendment tonight, that that would count as our new budget. I don't think we have to rescind, but Paul, if you're more comfortable rescinding it, we can do that after we pass this new number. And Lesley Ann, if the if the vote fails right now. We're we're in hot water to a certain extent. And I'm not trying to take anybody individual's freedom away to vote no if they don't agree with this. We would have to send through the state our our voted budget from March 12. That number would then become our 112 budget. And with the projected shortfalls that our towns are assuring us exist. And with the estimated shortfalls that could be coming from the state. We we could be putting ourselves in a in a terrible position and putting our towns in fiscal peril. Does anybody want to speak to what would happen if we passed our March number as our 112 number?
I I will.
Go ahead, Gordon.
It would mean the towns would vote no and we'd have an additional 30 days.
Lesley Ann, did you hear Gordon's answer to you right there?
I did.
All right. Does anybody want to talk about that possibility?
Jason, this is
Yep, go ahead.
So being from Halifax, we were more than willing to hold off town meeting. And without the chapter 70 numbers, we didn't think it made financial sense. Vote a budget and that's why we were looking at going forward with a 112. But our 112 has to be what we spent in FY20 as well. I mean Halifax would vote no to the budget. It doesn't give us a budget. We'd be forced to go to the 112. So the one issue is if we don't know what's going on with chapter 70, again, this is just a shot in the dark. We are going to be looking for the towns to hold another town meeting. So I I think that that cost of the town meetings needs to be baked into the town's.
Yeah, so just to be clear, because you know, for a minute, I could see a lot of relief on committee members' faces. That, you know, if we just voted our March number, that the towns would most likely vote no for it, which would put us into the 112 budget scenario. But Gordon, would that 112 be 112 of our March budget or 112 of last year's numbers?
One twelfth of last year's number.
So Lesley Ann, by default, we would end up back right with the number that we're talking about, but at least you could say that you didn't vote for it. We were forced into it. It could give you that moral stance. I know a lot of us feel like we would would like to look at it that way. So let's just take a pause here and think before we make a vote. All right. So Christine, thank you for that. But I think we want to pause for a minute here. Now, we're, we don't want to rush into anything and and make a mistake. Again, the state's putting our backs up against the wall because they need the number by June 1. Chris, I would love for you to speak for a minute. Go ahead.
Yeah, I've been quiet here most of the night. It's been a long day of things. I think the risk right now, as I'm understanding it, is the adoption of a 20 budget right now by getting 11 of the 12 votes that we have in the in the call is if it's approved by the towns, it's done. If we go with our prior budget, the 26,698 without a reduction. We can probably anticipate the leadership of the towns rejecting it. And maybe as well the the audience and and town meetings rejecting it, which then the process rolls forward 30 days. And we still have an open budget from my understanding. But obviously, the budget season starts before we can get that 30 days period done. And when July 1 rolls, we would be spending 112 of the 25,992. But we still have an ability to go up or down from there once we get some clarity. I think the key is I'm not expecting it to go up in any way, but I like clarity. And I think it's worth standing firm for our schools here and saying, hey, we don't want to box ourselves into 25,992. Expecting level funded chapter 70, only have chapter 70 come in half a million short, a million short. And we as a district are the ones that have to make up that million dollar shortfall. And by make it up, I mean we have to adjust our budget down to a lower than anticipated place. And we know as we've gone through the iterations of where to cut and how to cut. We don't have a lot of choices to pull a million dollars out of our pockets. Using free cash or E and D as a one time for any piece of that, I think would be a another very challenging conversation, both at the committee level and then going back to the towns for permission to spend E and D for support operations. I don't think any town typically, you know, go that route of operational support from free cash. I know we are in what could be a very, very bad two year period of budgets. You know, we say that we want to get a budget for June 30. But is July's revenue of next fiscal year going to be any better than June's revenue of this year? We're still not fully functioning as an economy. So if that's the case, I think we're still going to see a soft number coming in for 2022 even. So I'm somewhat okay with letting the towns decline us at town meeting and give ourselves the an open door for 30 days to hopefully sharpen pencils and get more clarity because going in with a lot of unknowns is is somewhat frightening to me. Thanks.
Jason just dropped.
Eric, you're in charge.
Hey, guys, I'm back. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Chris. Just a point of personal privilege, one of the committee members has asked for a brief pause. And before we do that, I just want to withdraw my motion for the budget at this point. So we can all think about it and then we can reapproach the table with clear minds. So is there any objection from the committee for a five minute recess? Okay, seeing none, I will let the public know we will be back into regular session at 8:04 PM. If you need to take a moment, we will not start before 8:04. Thank you very much. Eric, can you tell me when your town elections are?
June 27, I believe. Let me just double check that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Gordon or Paula, do you know when your your town elections are?
I have it down as Halifax on the 20th of June.
Thank you, Lisa. Do you have my my town too?
It's the same day.
Okay, so.
Correct for Halifax.
Great, great. So I'm just going to bring the committee back to the table now after our adjournment. Or not our adjournment, our recess. And I am going to take a roll call just to make sure that we're all back at the table for continued discussion. Mike, are you on?
Yes, I'm back.
All right. Paula, you online?
I see an empty chair.
Yep. Chris, are you back with us?
I'm happy to be back.
Thanks, Chris. Gordon, you still with us, right? There you are. Take a word. About Lesley Ann?
Yep.
Okay, Eric, I know you're here.
And thank you.
And Paula's back. I see her now.
Okay, great. So we're back in session at 8:05. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. As you can see, this is one of the most nuanced meetings that we've ever tried to hold. And again, not doing it physically with one another makes it even a little bit more difficult. You know, this is this is really like trying to play a game of chess. And and I've never wanted to look at being part of this committee and doing this job as a game. It's ridiculous. And we're being asked to perform with a lot of the pieces being taken off of our out of our hands and off the board before we're even allowed to make a move. I I think I, like many of the committee members here, we're totally satisfied with the budget we passed back in March. Now, I understand that the fiscal realities of the world have changed. But you know, it it breaks my heart to have to vote for that lesser number. So Lesley Ann through her questioning and Gordon through his understanding of the 112 budgets and the situation. You know, I think we may have found a way not to have to vote yes for budget cuts. To give ourselves an opportunity for for 30 more days of information where we can work with the administration if we have to make those cuts of where they would come from. But maybe we'd have some more information from the state. Now, you know, that also kind of flies in the face of what Speaker DeLeo said with not having any further information for us until after June 30. But again, it would allow people who are morally opposed to making these deep cuts into our school from having to vote yes for them. It would arrive at the same conclusion. But I do want to make sure that we talk to Christine first about this because I know Desi has kind of backed her into a corner and in a way us into a corner and you know, we might, we might all want to give a resolute. We don't care what you say, Desi. Right now, we might want to make a stance. We've made those stances before. But Christine, can you can you speak to us about the language that Desi used when they asked you for numbers and and how realistic they wanted that budget to be?
They wanted our new budget to be what we were expecting to do based on information we had from the towns. Now, what you were saying is valid. If the school committee decides, no, we stand by that budget. We want to stick to that until we have better information. That to me seems like that's well within the realm of what Desi's looking for right now. For us, I think the only danger is going to be if we end up with the 112 budget, how far that goes because we run into a problem in the fall with funding. My debt payments are due when the third payroll comes in September. So there's there's going to be an issue with with the 112 budget because that's how our funding will be coming in. And that may not sustain us for that long.
What would the difference be between us voting the FY20 right now and the position that would put you in in the business office? Or the state giving us the 112 budget based on our FY20 number?
I think that the the 112 budget will be based on our FY20 budget.
Regardless.
Right, regardless. The only difference is one of those items that I know of that are in addition to that. Plumb contrary time and any other, for instance, if we had a different debt schedule and that was excreting this year, that'd be another one of the items that they'd be looking at, but what you're what the committee suggesting is within the realm of how they asked me for the information. It's just with it. Depending on when and how the towns vote, we just may run into an issue with the funding of the 112 budget because we can't spend beyond the 112. And our fund spending is not spent evenly throughout the year. We can get to the summer because we have lower payrolls, but once we get into the fall, we could be get to a predicament if the budget issue wasn't resolved.
Okay, so based on that information, and I have rescinded my motion for the budget. So there is no motion on the floor at this point. Do any of you have any questions for Christine or any comments to the committee to help us try and come up with how we want to walk away from the table tonight?
Jason, this is Gordon.
Go ahead, Gordon.
How about if we take the FY20 budget number and we reduce our chapter 70 by that 700,000 dollar number? So we give we give the the, we know the assessments will fail. But it gives us the 112 budget number we know the towns can meet and we get past Christine's issue that she just raised.
But can you, just for everybody's understanding, tell us what that number would be?
So if you if you cut chapter 70, that's in our assessment spreadsheet from the March meeting by the 706,000. The assessment number wouldn't change. It would allow us to lower our total budget to the FY20 number. We lower our chapter 70 number, the towns still get the number that we voted in March, which they will not pass. But it does get past Christine's point that they can't meet the revenue. The towns would still be able to meet the revenue and we get past that issue. I know this is outside the box stuff, but if we need to, we need to vote a budget. I'm comfortable with voting a budget that the towns can't meet.
Okay, all right. So first, Eric, we're going to go to you in a second. So Gordon, would you be talking about taking away that state aid from our FY20 or FY21 number?
So I I'm saying that we we vote tonight a budget of the 26 million dollars, the FY20 budget for 21. But we decrease our chapter 70 number by that same amount. 421, but we decrease our chapter 70 number by that same amount, which means the towns get the assessments that we voted in March, which we know they can't meet.
Okay.
Know, we know we're going to get a no vote, but we know that the towns can meet the revenue for the 26 million, which is the FY20 budget number. We, we need the towns to vote no, but we need to give the state a realistic budget that we know that the towns can actually afford. So I'm trying to come to a solution that would work.
Okay, so I'm going to let Christine think on that for a second. I'm going to see if Eric has a clarifying question first, and then I'm going to come to you, Christine. Eric, would you like to defer to Christine or do you have a question? And your mic is muted.
Thank you. Sorry. So my concern is giving the, not giving the towns what they asked for, for that assessment reduction. Unless we spoke with them and, and they were on board with basically not voting the school budget, because by sending it, sending them something that they can't pass without working with them on that would be, would, would make things difficult. And I don't think any of us really want to do that. I'd rather work with the town to see, you know, again, the cost of a town meeting, yes, it is, you know, $10,000 to $20,000, but I don't think that that is that big of a deal when we're talking about budgets, the size that we have. And I think getting it right is, is pretty important because even if there's additional funding or less funding and that the towns could do more or less, they're going to have to do another town meeting and Kingston does them anyways.
So Eric, if, if we make this change and have another meeting next week, we could always change the amount that we have projected for chapter 70 and change the assessment numbers. But this would give the ability to move forward for Christine, I believe.
But then I'm on board with you.
Okay, so that would require us taking an affirmative vote tonight, correct, Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that again. Christine, do you have any input on the idea that Gordon and Eric are tossing around right now?
I just want to make sure that I understand what we're saying, that we would use the, the, the budget that was voted for 21? Is that what we're saying? The 26, the 700, the budget that's $700,000 higher?
No. No, we would use, we would use FY20's budget number.
Okay.
Would lower the chapter 70 and total state aid number by the 706,000. So the assessment numbers would stay the same, but we'd be lowering our chapter 70 estimated revenue.
It's how you get to that number.
The total amount could be assessed would be the FY20 level in total?
Yes.
And they'll just change based on enrollments or in, in minimum contribution?
Yes. But it, it would give us the ability to be at the FY20 budget number so that we know that the towns can meet that. But we know that we, we need a no vote out of the towns. Otherwise, we can't force another town meeting. If, if, if the revenue picture increases, we can't cause them to have another town meeting.
But what you're asking for though may, went in, may vote yes, because it's in the realm of what they were looking for.
No, because we'd, we'd be sending them the assessment number that we sent in March. I'm saying take, take FY20, reduce that by this, reduce the state aid number by the $706,000.
I,
I know it's totally out of the box and I'm coming up with stuff on the block. So I, I don't expect anybody to, to.
I have to prove it to myself that it will work. Because what you're, what I understand you're saying is that, I don't know what I know anymore.
I think we'll feel in the same way, Christine. It's not just you. It's, it's a very interesting idea. I know Paula commented on it. Paula, do you want to say anything out loud about Gordon's idea?
No, I, I mean, I think he's, he's buying us time in a very unique way. You know, we, we, we talked about the idea of just voting a number, but I understand the challenge it creates for Christine because she has to account for the decrease in some line items in some fashion. Gordon's giving her an idea to take that whole decrease and plug it in one line item and we can move it around later as we have better information.
Yeah, and Chris also had a question as well. Thank you, Paula. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I think what Gordon's saying works for Desi's report, where you're, you're playing with, playing, you're working with the numbers on an accounting basis, leveling off the assessment and just sort of rolling everything else into the chapter 70. That makes sense. But I don't want to put this 25992 number to the towns, I don't think, because they may support it. And if they support it, we then are stuck in the position we've been talking about for the last hour of, we've got a budget of just short of 26 million without a, a lot of clarity to some of the moving parts. So I think we almost do need to maintain, I've changed my position during this call tonight, we do need to maintain the higher budget, the prior version, to re, to, in essence, to, not to challenge the towns, but to, to be firm that we don't have any real clarity improvement since then, except things are bad. You know, we don't know how bad. So we almost, we, we risk going to the low number and asking for a rejection, but we're not asking for rejection from the, the town leadership. We're asking rejection from, you know, some people on this call today who are residents and people who aren't on the call, who may be less informed. It may be a very, very unique town meeting in two weeks with the, the constrictions of, of COVID-19. You know, we aren't all probably going to be sitting in the same auditorium potentially. It may scare people away. So what might be your typical crowd of, you know, yays or nays that you expect to be there for certain agenda items, they may not be in attendance anymore. It could be really a, a very risky proposition for us to go in with a budget that I think the towns might accept. So I'm leaning more towards almost requesting rejection from town meetings. And then to help support that is to go in with a higher number, I guess. But Gordon's got it right, I think, for the, the Desi reporting.
Yeah, I think those were, were good points, Chris. And they're echoing some of the things that are bouncing around in my head. You know, a lot of smart people making a lot of smart comments and suggestions tonight. So I appreciate everybody's input. Leslie Ann, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I'm, I'm reticent to speak up because the conversation has turned in so many different directions, which I think is exactly what we're supposed to be doing. You know, we're supposed to be safeguarding our schools and our, and our kids' education and, and making stronger communities through there. And I came into this conversation tonight with the intention of voting no on the, on the numbers, because I knew it was what I thought, I shouldn't say I knew, I had every indication that the committee was going to vote yes and it was going to pass. And so I thought that my no vote was frankly going to be more of a symbolic gesture on behalf of the whole committee that, you know, we're, well, really not on my behalf, because, you know, I feel like we're doing this in the absence of information and also by some artificial deadline that Desi has, has required us to do. And so as the tables have, that the chair has been moved around here and recognizing that my no vote would essentially sink this whole discussion, because I carry two, two votes out of the 12 that we have here. You know, it becomes a different decision point in my head. And my thought, though, is I'm still going to vote no because of my thoughts that I think we're, don't have enough information. I feel like we're being given an artificial deadline. And we voted a budget on March 12th that we've, that we had already taken cuts to, to make it what the towns wanted. I know that we're in a different financial situation than we were on March 12th. I understand that fully. But I do believe sending it to the towns to get their, the, the people's input through town meeting is a good idea. And if they vote no, then that's okay. It does buy us some time. So I don't even know if it's worth putting the question forward, Jason, because you, I mean, you can, but I'm still, I'm going to vote no.
Now, Leslie Ann, I'm pretty much in alignment with the way you just expressed yourself right now. For a multitude of reasons, I didn't want to find myself having to make these cuts. We've been forced into them by the economic realities of the situation. We've also been forced into making a vote tonight, potentially, because someone told us we had to. Not someone who won't even give us the information to come up with an accurate number to work with. We're putting so many people's lives on pause right now because of the situation that Desi is, is putting us in. And to a certain extent, this, this will continue the process, but the process would continue regardless of how we voted tonight, because the numbers are not legitimate. So, you know, I, I, I am starting to lean very heavily towards the idea of leaving our original number on the table, communicating clearly to the towns and through the press, through, through town leadership, that we expect our budget to be rejected, which will then in turn leave us with the FY20 number to work from. And again, that will give us a month more data and information and it will give us some additional time to work with Christine and work with Jill to give some guidance on where we think those cuts should come from. So that's where I am as an individual. I'm not speaking with any capacity beyond just a member of the committee with a single vote, as Leslie Ann. So eloquently put, you know, I have a one vote. Sometimes people say it's a half a vote, you know, but that, that's really where we are. So I appreciate your, your reticence, Leslie Ann, and your commitment to, to the schools and why we all are here. And that's to provide the best education for the citizens of our communities and the students of our schools. Who's up next? Anybody from the committee up next?
Jason, could we ask Christine what this does to her workload?
Yes, Gordon.
Christine, if we vote not, well, if we don't take a vote tonight, what does that do to your workload for tomorrow?
If we don't have a, I, I think I need a budget. So I need a budget voted, whether it's, you want to stick with the one that we did back in March and go with that. Tomorrow and Monday will be full days.
And but that is, that is regardless of how we voted tonight, correct, Christine?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Leslie Ann.
So would it be appropriate then to propose a new motion?
You're more than welcome to.
Okay, so I'm going to propose that we submit a 112 budget to Desi on the deadline, the artificial deadline that they have imposed, based on our March 12 budget, retaining the number that we voted as, as a school committee.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I second that, Eric.
Okay, so I'm not going to make the mistake of trying to jump right to a vote. Who would like to make comment or has questions?
I just want to make sure that word "artificial" is in my motion.
I heard, and I think every single person in this, in this audience appreciates the importance of the motion as. Go ahead, Eric.
I do too.
Okay.
This is for our Desi vote. Are we intending to leave these numbers as well for the town meetings? Or are we talking about meeting again next week to vote a lower number for our budget? What is our?
My intention, my intent was to cover both cases.
Okay. Paula?
Do we even need a vote? Because right now we have a budget, a budget that was voted in March. If we take no vote, that's the budget Christine would have to work with. Do we even need a vote here?
So Paula, I was thinking the way you were thinking, but I, I believe I just heard Christine say that, that said that she would need a vote. Go ahead, Christine, can you clarify for us?
If the committee decides not to change their budget vote, that the, the vote, the vote from 312 stands, then that's the, the FY21 approved budget by the school committee.
So does that mean we do not have to make a vote tonight?
I could use that as what I would submit to Desi.
Okay. Paula, do you have a, a strong feeling about just letting it stand? Or do you think that we should follow through with Leslie Ann's motion?
I'm not really sure. I know there's a difference at this point. So as of this moment, I, I don't think there's a difference there. If we get together again next week, there might be.
Yeah, I think if it passes or it fails at this point, that's the, the budget that will end up getting submitted, because we don't have another budget to submit.
Right, so.
So, Chris, you have a comment? Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if it would support Christine's 112 budget for them to have a vote from today versus what might appear as a lack of effort on our part and going back to a March vote.
I would love to let them know that there was no lack of effort here. I don't think Desi really cares, to be honest with you. We're just another cog in the machine to them. To us, these are real people, real students, real teachers, real staff members, real buildings. But to Desi, at this point, they just want to check it off their list. Sorry to say it in, in those terms, but that's the reality of the situation. If they had any heart about the situation, they wouldn't be putting us in this artificial conundrum. Gordon, did you say you wanted to say something? Go ahead.
I, I just think as a committee, we need to realize that this is just a statement and we know we have to cut the budget.
Yeah, like, like Leslie Ann so eloquently said, she didn't want to come here tonight and vote to cut our budget. You know, we're being forced into this situation again by things out of our control economically, both at the town level in here and also because of the artificial constraints. So Leslie Ann would like to move her motion. Is there any further comments or questions? Okay, so Leslie Ann's motion on the floor is, go, go ahead, Paula, you got a question?
Can the motion be repeated?
Leslie Ann, would you like to repeat your motion, please, for the committee?
Oh, good Lord, that means I have to remind myself what I, what I did a minute ago.
Maybe Lisa has it written down?
Do you have it written down? This is not funny. I should, I'm not laughing about, I'm just.
Well, I was going to listen to the recording after the, we're done meeting tonight, but I have written down, propose, you're proposing to submit a 112 budget based on the March 12 budget that was voted on by the school committee.
Yes, and just the clarification that that'll be submitted to both the town and Desi. And don't forget the word "artificial," as Jean just remembered, the artificial deadline from Desi.
Any further comments or questions from the committee before I call for a vote?
So just to clarify, Jason, a yes vote is to move our FY21 number voted in March, and a no vote is to not do that, but not necessarily to, to move anything else?
That is correct. A yes vote would support your motion that we submit our March 12 budget to Desi for them to use that to formulate 112 budgets. So.
And to the, and to the towns, correct?
And to the towns, which we will have to make sure that we communicate to the towns what we did here tonight and the logic behind it as well. It is complicated, but Leslie Ann and Gordon and several of you tonight have managed to wrap my head around this very complicated idea. And I appreciate everyone's thought process going into this. So any further comments, questions from the committee before I do roll call? Okay, Mike, are you vote?
I'm a yes vote.
Thank you, Mike. Paula?
Yes.
Thank you, Paula. Chris?
Yeah.
Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Your, your motion passes unanimously, Leslie Ann, and well crafted and thought of. And again, thank you, everyone, for, for thinking outside the box to come to this, this resolution for this moment. Again, I keep saying this. Again, I keep saying this statement over and over again. We are in the beginning of this process yet again. We find ourselves constantly starting over. And it's not for lack of effort on anyone's part. But we will submit to DUCI our original budget from March 12, which again was $26,698,578-ish. Don't hold me to that. That's not official number. That's my back of the napkin number. With 2.71% increase over last year's budget. And this is with the realization that we have put our towns and our town leadership and ourselves in a little bit of a pickle, but with communication and explanation, we can explain what we're trying to do here. Leslie Ann, floor is yours.
I appreciate that. And just as a follow-up to the motion, and I appreciate the discussion, I want to make sure that folks really understand that walking away from this, we've not walked away from our problem. We've just pushed our problem down the street a little bit. And we have a lot of hard work ahead of us. And I think that everybody involved has done such a great job of trying to come to the table with ideas on how to solve this. And I think that we need to really take this extra time, if we get it, to push ourselves to come up with solid equitable solutions for how we're going to move forward. And I don't want anybody to think that I'm doing this just out of spite or emotion. I really am trying to get us to a place, and I think we all are, that we feel that it impacts our schools the least. So I just wanted to thank you for letting me say that.
Well said. Anybody else from the committee like to share some thoughts or questions at this point?
Jason, this is Gordon.
Go ahead, Gordon.
So with my selectman hat on, Halifax is going to vote a 1/12 budget. We would be voting no to this. So without the other two committees giving you a yes, it would be a no. And the spending as of July 1st would have to be at the FY20 number, like Christine said. So that was why I was talking about the out-of-box reduction in E and D. But I understand what we did tonight. I just, I think it's going to make it another level of complication. But I'm for what we did.
Thank you, Gordon. And I'm going to call another meeting right now for next Thursday, June 4th, so we can continue putting our heads together. Is there anybody on the committee who objects to having another meeting next Thursday to continue our conversation and our work?
Jason, go ahead, Gordon. Can I request you invite the finance committees and selectmen to the town?
No, absolutely, Gordon.
Jason, what would be our goal next week?
I believe our goal next week will just be an update and see if we have any reactions from the towns. And so we can have a conversation with them prior to town meetings in an open session to explain what we did here tonight and the rationale behind it. I know we're probably going to make some phone calls to our selectman and finance committee members as individuals between now and then, but I think it's important for us to have that conversation out loud as well as a full committee. Mike, go ahead.
Hi, Jason. I've been quiet during the meeting, which you know I usually am because I usually take everything in. And when I don't disagree, you know that it's heard in a meeting. And, you know, I wanted to thank everybody. Everybody's been working really hard. Everything that's been going on. And this is why I'm on the committee, because we have great members, great teachers. Everybody is doing a great job. For the June 4th meeting, we do have, and Jill can speak with this, I believe we have a Plenton Ave meeting.
Can you tell me what time that would be at, Mike?
Six.
Six o'clock, I believe it is. I have you. Yeah, six o'clock.
And I mean, I wouldn't want to ask you to not give them their full time, but do you have an estimated meeting time?
I'm not, Jill, do you have any?
Think it might be?
I think it could be as long as an hour.
Anybody have an objection to us if we're just going to basically be having a conversation with the selectmen to let them know what went on here tonight of us starting our Silver Lake meeting at 7:30?
A question?
Go ahead, Eric.
I'm assuming we're going to be reaching out to the probably town administrators beforehand anyways. So I think a lot of those discussions will happen. So, you know, our meeting next week with the selectmen would probably just be more of a roundtable. And they'll already be alerted to what we've discussed prior to that.
Yeah, I don't anticipate it being a long meeting, but I still think that we need to have that in a public setting, not just on a phone calls as individuals. Just so there's the transparency of what we're trying to do here, since it's so outside the box at this point. Any objections to us having a 7:30 meeting next Thursday to just have that roundtable? So I'm seeing none, so let's schedule that in and post that meeting for June 4th at 7:30 PM. And I'll work with Lisa to come up with some of the language for the posting of that meeting. But the general, the general point will be to just convey to the towns why we did what we did here tonight, a rationale behind it, and how we move forward together. All right. Any further discussions on the budget at this point from anybody on the committee? Anybody from the administration? So we still do have another agenda item on today's meeting. And that agenda item is anything having to do and related to the COVID-19 state of emergency for both our schools and the state of Massachusetts. Does anybody have any business under the COVID-19 that they'd like to bring up here tonight?
Jill's got her hand up.
Okay, Jill, you can go first, then Chris can go.
Sure. So we have asked our nurses to send requests to the building principals for PPE. And this week, we had a meeting with the Commissioner of Education, who will be sending out a list of recommended products within, in about a week. He has recommended that schools not delay, even though we don't have this list of recommended items that we begin purchasing or at least attempting to purchase PPEs as soon as possible. In that includes not only masks and gloves, but also hand sanitizers and thermometers. And for schools of over 1,000 students, they recommend the cameras with the temperature check as people walk in a door. In addition, they believe that there will be guidance by the end of June with regards to reentry. And even that guidance could change before the start of school. One of the things that we have done is we have encouraged, we've worked with our building principals to begin thinking about what our work groups will look like and to begin to solicit volunteers so that there's representation in both elementary and secondary from all the schools to provide for parent input and student input as well. And so we're going to look at both the social, emotional, the academic and facility needs to the best of our ability and again, without a budget to really help guide us, recognizing that there's a lot of unknowns. So what we've also worked with our principals on is the curbside pickup of materials for students either in lockers or in the case of elementary schools and how that can be done responsibly and with social distancing. So they, the principals are working with their staff on that. We discussed that today. And in addition, the elementary schools have worked together with Assistant Superintendent Ryan Lynch and Melissa Farrell to develop an elementary report card for this unusual term, student term. So those are our COVID-19-related changes and what's been going on and what we're focusing on next.
So Paula, I noticed that you were wondering about some of the implications of all this PPE and COVID-19-related items. Just so you know, I kind of tapped Chris, sorry, tapped Eric to be a point person working with Plymouth County, who did manage to secure quite a bit of funds from the federal government for direct COVID-19-related items. And those are the closest federal funds to actually us getting our hands on at this point. So we'll continue to work with the county through the towns and through Jill's office to try and secure any of those funds that could be allotted to us and helping us purchase those items. But again, those are things that we will have to look at potentially for having budget implications for us that we did not consider back in March. The other item that also came out of some of those meetings that happened this week up at the state level was Secretary Pfizer reiterated the fact that he has very little doubt that there will be some form of distance learning at some point next year. So we also have to keep our eye on the ball with technology and access for students if they find themselves in a situation where they're fully at home or in some sort of hybrid method of some class time mixed with some at-home time. So those are two items we're going to have to be very conscious of. And having some of the extra time to work on the budget now, those are things we can think a little bit more deeply on. So, good point, Paula. Chris, go ahead. You said you had something you wanted to add?
Can I defer to Eric's announcement first?
Sure, go ahead. Eric, do you have an announcement?
I do. So Kingston has their annual town meeting scheduled right now for June 13th. I was approached by the town moderator who would like to move that venue from KIS Auditorium to Sirico Field. They want to do it outdoors. It's rather time-sensitive. They potentially will be reposting the warrant tomorrow and would love to be able to announce that on the warrant. If they can't get it done, it may not be, they'll have to move it to June 20th. So the reason I'm bringing it up is I'm not sure if we need a vote or not. It's just going to be utilizing the outdoor fields, but they're not allowed under, I guess, the Board of Health to use porta-potties. They actually have to use the restrooms inside of our building. So at KIS, they had planned on costs to do an ultra-disinfecting, sanitizing, whatever of those indoor bathrooms. They don't all have to be open, but just some of them. And then they were also going to be paying, you know, janitors and whatnot, whatever we need to support a meeting. They're thinking of using the press box as for the moderator and the folks who are usually up on the stage, and then some of the other government members in the bleachers, and then the public would be out on the field in chairs. So I've sent a note and asked if Michaela or Jill have any objections or any concerns. And then Jason, when I spoke to you about this earlier today, and your only concern was that we might need to take a vote because of using the facilities, the bathroom.
Right, right. So I had no problem with the idea of allowing one of our member towns use of the fields. When I heard about the bathrooms, I just wanted to check with the committee since we'll be allowing people into our schools, which is something we haven't done in months. But with the assurance from the town and with them picking up the cost of any of the ultra-cleaning, I'm comfortable with it. And I know Eric has also extended the conversation to the superintendent and to Michaela. But I just would appreciate the support of a vote from the committee. Lot of funny things going on in the chat right now. Someone did ask the question, "What happens if it rains?" And someone said, "It will be a quick meeting." So I'm sure Kingston has a rain date. And, you know, in our motion, we'll just allow them to use the field through their town meeting. We won't set a specific time or date to it with the contingency that they cover the cost of any of the cleaning, the setup, the materials and supplies. So, and I have a motion from the committee.
Jason, I have one concern with chairs on the field. This is Chris.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm just concerned with a four-legged chair on a nice turf field that's been rested, shall we say. I don't know if the legitimate concern or not, but if we have 100 people, 200 people out there in non-lawn chairs or in lawn chairs, we could potentially, you know, put some nice one-inch, two-inch divots into the field. So I don't know how soft the field is. We try and keep it soft for all the impact, but it's just a thought of concern if we don't lay down like you normally would, like a plywood base or something if you were having a real event at Fenway or somewhere else, you know?
We normally do graduation, so it's the same thing, I would think.
Oh, I haven't been to a graduation. My apologies.
No, no, it's a fair point, Chris. And, you know, I don't think it would do much more damage than the first practice on the field, to be quite honest, but it's a legitimate concern. And we also have to take into account that the MIAA has not made the determination if fall sports will be happening at this point regardless. So that field might have even more time to rest than any of us wanted to. But again, in cooperation with our towns to try and get the business of our communities done, I'm in favor of allowing this to happen. But again, it wasn't something that I felt comfortable deciding just as the chair, since they will be using our facilities. This is legitimately the first time we've let other people into our building since we dismissed the kids on the 12th of March. So I didn't want to make that decision on my own, especially knowing we were going to be here tonight.
No, I'm fine with it if other people are. I just wanted to raise the question. I have something else before we go back to it.
All right.
Why don't I go ahead and make the motion then?
Go ahead, Eric.
Eric, before you do, Carl just posted that it might be the gym use as well.
That's not how I took what Carl said, but Carl, do you want to unmute? And if, do you know something about meeting the gym as well? I did not hear that from Janet.
Perhaps it has changed that originally Janet mentioned outdoors on the football field. And then the fire chief, Mark, is involved because he's the emergency planning guru. And he was in favor of the gymnasium. So the last email I saw, which was probably about 1:00 today, they were, I thought, talking about the gymnasium, but I thought they had discussed it with Jill.
No, well, Jill has been busy today, and that's why Janet reached out to me. Jill?
I did speak with Janet, and when I spoke with Janet, the request was for outdoors. But again, I have been in a lot of meetings today with Eric, so things could have changed.
You know, I don't know. Go with the outside. I just threw it in there because I had seen that email.
So I don't know whether we should also just throw it in there that maybe add in the gymnasium. And maybe Michaela can speak up if there's any concerns with opening up the gymnasium for this purpose?
Sure, Eric. My only, I have two concerns. One, it's not enough space, so then you're limited to the number of attend. But the other concern is that there is no air conditioning in our gym. So if it's a hot day, it's going to be pretty uncomfortable and could potentially hazard a situation for our community members.
So Michaela, this is Jason. Do you have any concerns about allowing people into your building at this point to use the gymnasium? I just know how careful you've been about not having anybody in there, and this is like a big group of people, so.
Yeah, I mean, we'd be willing to work with the town to make that accommodation, whether it's on the field or the gym. You know, we would work with our head custodian, our facility director, to put some parameters in place. Bathrooms located in the locker room right off the gymnasium, so we could potentially, you know, tape off that portion of the building. We could also, if the meeting takes place on the football field, because it's very accessible from that location.
Jill's got her hands up, and so does Leslie Ann. But Jason, are you there? Jason's not there, so Jill, go ahead and speak if you want to.
My concern would be making sure that we have approval of the Board of Health. We're happy to work with the town and try to accommodate their requests, but we would certainly not want to do anything that the Board of Health would not recommend, given the circumstances. And my concern is the closed-in nature of the gymnasium versus outside.
Yeah. Yeah, so Eric, I would also echo. Yeah, so Eric, I would also echo what Jill just said. You know, I appreciate Michaela's willingness to help the towns out, but obviously in, in cooperation with the Board of Health, I'd be willing to entertain the use of our facilities for town meeting.
Leslie Ann has her hand up.
No, go ahead, Leslie Ann.
So I'm sorry, just clarify for me why the combination of our KIS auditorium and adjacent gym is not adequate? And then in addition, I was wondering if, if there was an outside option, which it sounds like that's off the table now, but if there was, why wouldn't we use the, why wouldn't we use the soccer fields behind KIS?
Can I address that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just.
Please. So I think, I think there may be a disconnect between the town moderator and, and the town. There may be disagreement. I, I can't go any further than that, but that, that may be what's going on. But in terms of using the fields at KIS, that doesn't have an audio system. So the, the reason they thought about Syracuse was because it could use the press box and then PAC TV would be able to tap into that. They would be able to have that microphone and the electricity out there. It's just an easier setup. But in the end, I don't think they're going to be using both. I think they're going to be using one or the other and that's it.
Yeah, I just, I guess I just don't understand why they can't use the auditorium at KIS and the adjacent gym if necessary to spread people out.
Because they want to be outside. The moderator's pushing for outside.
So I'm, so I'm just curious, so, and I don't mean to like stir the pot here, but we're essentially haven't been letting anybody into the, into the school since March, whatever, 12th, 14th? And we're not even letting our teachers in, we're not letting our kids get their backpacks, we're not letting, but now we're going to let an entire town in our school? I, I guess I'm just not, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not so, I mean, rent some porta potties and put them outside. Like I, I just don't.
You can't, it's not allowed.
Yeah, the porta potties is a contamination concern because of the way it's disposed. It's not.
What do you mean a contamination concern?
So scientists to scientists, the concern about viral material being found in fecal matter and if it not being flushed and removed from the location just sitting in a receptacle can cause concerns for contamination.
So we're not allowed through DPH to use porta potties? It has to be actual physical. It's not up to us? I'm just the middleman.
So, you know, again, I would prefer them just to use Syracuse Field, but I will defer to Michaela and Jill, especially with that caveat that the Board of Health is tied into this very, very strongly. And I will be voting in favor of allowing the town of Kingston to use our facility at any point to conduct their town meeting. So, any further discussion from the committee? Did we get a second to your motion, Eric?
Did I finish my motion?
I don't know. Were you cut off? Do you want to make it again and then we can give you a second?
So, so I'll make a motion that we allow the town of Kingston to use Syracuse Field and our restrooms inside the building, provided that they are covering the costs associated with that. Do we also want to add in the indoor facilities? So also that indoor facilities in conjunction with Board of Health and the town, the town's approval in terms of using that facility.
All right. Do I have a second?
Eric.
Can we get a second first, Gordon, and then we can discuss?
I was going to ask him to change his motion.
You want to make a friendly amendment?
I, I would just open it up to the Halifax and Plimpton towns as well with the same caveats.
I'm in agreement.
Go ahead, Paula.
Can we be clear that the Board of Health has to approve either option, not just the indoor, because the way it sounds now, it's just the indoor.
Would you like me to redo my motion?
Yep, rescind it and restate it, please.
I will rescind it and I will restate it. I'll make a motion that we allow the towns of Kingston, Halifax, or Plimpton to use Syracuse Field and the bathrooms inside of our high school or the gymnasium and the bathrooms inside of our high school in conjunction with the Board of Health and any other approvals we would need to get from the town at any time in coordinating with Michaela and Jill.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Gordon seconds.
Gordon seconds. Thank you, Gordon. Is there any further discussion, please? And again, committee members, I can't see you all, so put it into the chat if you have something you'd like to say. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one. I'm not a fan of the, the indoor usage of the basketball court, cafeteria, whatever. I know in past Kingston has used the cafeteria as overflow, so I don't see why KIS has a basketball court. It has right next door the cafeteria, why we couldn't indoor in Kingston? But I absolutely support the outdoor usage of Syracuse.
I echo that sentiment, Jason. This is Leslie Ann.
Okay, thank you, Chris and Leslie Ann, for your input. Any other committee members? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to allow the towns of the three communities to use our facilities, which would include Syracuse Field and the gymnasium and related bathrooms, as long as they cover the cost of setup and cleanup and work in conjunction with the Board of Health and the administrators of Silver Lake Regional Schools.
Mike has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I just, Eric, what, I'm sorry, what was the date again?
Well, it, right now it's June 13th, but it could be moved to June 20th.
Yeah, okay, but so with that timeframe, we're not even at, at the state's phase two, right?
I have no idea.
Where, where you could have that, that lodge of gatherings?
Well, that's why I put in there that it would have to be under the direction of the Board of Health and, and, and I, I only know about the request for the football field. Carl just added in that they may be requested, the fire chief may have requested that it be inside in the gym. So again, I'm only familiar with the Syracuse request. And Gordon just said town meetings are excluded from the large gathering.
Yeah, and so, so unfortunately, might schools be come September? So we need to keep our eye on that ball. Those are valid concerns and comments. You know, they're saying to keep gatherings to restricted sizes, but they're making all these exemptions now. So we're going to have to be very vigilant of that as a school committee as we start to think about going back to school in September.
No, I understand that. I don't have a problem with the outside stuff. I mean, how many, how many people are we talking about that are going to be inside our building?
You're making, you're making a fair point, Mike, and, and I, and I see it being echoed by several other committee members here. So let's vote the motion as, as stated and then if we want to come back and if it doesn't pass, then vote just outside use. We can do it that way as well. Any Kingston members know what the quorum is for your town meetings?
I think it's 100.
125.
100.
100?
Jess Kramer and Leslie both said 100.
Yeah, getting a couple different viewpoints saying 100 and that are reputable sources. There might be 125 who show up, Chris. Who knows? Maybe 300.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Leslie Ann.
Leslie Ann, is this Eric's motion?
It is Eric's motion.
Okay, would you mind if I ask Eric a question then?
Go ahead.
Okay. Hey, Eric, since the late breaking news, the potential for using indoor, can, would you be amenable to a friendly amendment and removing the indoor use? And then if it becomes clear, we can adjust, but I'm not comfortable with your motion only because of the indoor use. But I'm supporter of the outdoor use.
Yeah. So Leslie Ann, you're, what you're saying is if it's outdoor, they can use Syracuse, but if they're going to do indoor, they should hold it where they typically hold it?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, Eric, if you'd be amenable to a friendly amendment?
That's fine. I'm really just, yes, I would say remove the indoor use and just allow the bathroom use. That, that's fine. So do I need to reread the motion or can Leslie Ann's comment be the motion?
Well, I mean, I think this is more of a guidance issue. I don't think this is as formal as the vote we took tonight, so I will accept the friendly amendment that will allow.
Thank you.
Use of our facilities on the Silver Lake Regional Campus and the bathrooms inside the building.
Yep.
But if the entire event or part of the event is going to be held indoors, that they should use their original venue.
Got it.
Does that sound fair to everyone? So this is more of a straw poll than a, than a formal vote, but again, I didn't want to make this decision all by myself, considering what we've been through the past two months. So Mike, how do you vote if it's just the outdoor?
Yes.
Okay, Paula? Thank you. Chris?
Yeah.
Gordon?
Yes.
Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So you can convey on behalf of us to the town that they're welcome to use Syracuse Field and the adjacent bathrooms and to coordinate with Michaela and the Board of Health to make sure we're within the governor's recommendations.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything to add?
Chris, Chris gave you the floor, so go back to Chris. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we were talking about COVID and I was listening to Jill's comments on terms of PPE and sanitation and everything else. And I know we have this Plymouth County fund that we all keep referencing and this goes back to my comment and Jason's iteration, maybe a week or so ago, that the SFFR committee maybe should be active in this safety side of things, either figuring out what we can apply to Plymouth, support the administration as they deal with all this other stuff. That just makes sense to me to be more active in this or create a separate COVID committee if it's too much on safer's plate.
No, Chris, I took your advice and I talked to Paula last week and we've actually talked about it again this week, just touching base of exactly how that would work and in the role of safer in that process. And Paula's ready to roll once, once we have actionable items to look at. Thanks for that idea, Chris, and thank you, Paula, again, for your leadership with suffer. All right. Any further, any further comments or concerns from the committee on COVID-19 and the state of emergency at this point? Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. So it, it, it came to my attention that the, the whole, the funding that is there now for COVID spending cannot be used for anything that we currently have budgeted, but it would be something outside of our budget, but that has to do in response with COVID-19.
Yeah, like thermal scanners?
Yeah.
Because we have a bunch of those in the budget.
Right, and, and a lot of these things, we're not going to know until after July 1. So right now, they're in phase one. Towns can, can apply for phase one and there's a certain amount of money that, that's allocated to phase one. We don't have a whole lot. We will have a lot more after July 1. Having said that, one of the things that we may need in response to COVID-19 is more technology to help support the remote learning. If we have other technology budgeted items that are not in our budget right now and maybe even for this year, I'm wondering if we want to start looking at putting in an application for additional Chromebooks or some other technology items before June 30th.
Eric, can I jump on that with you for a second? Because you're spot on with that and just having my educator hat on right now. One of the areas that has been just absolutely depressing to look at is, is how some of our students, who are the most needy of our students, have really suffered through the remote learning. And I'm talking about students who would require some adaptive technology to really help them access the curriculum. You know, a Chromebook in a regular ed's hands, you know, with a parent around who can help out, can access the curriculum to a decent extent, but, you know, some of that adaptive technology for our special ed population would really go a long way to enriching and helping to try and balance out the playing field a little bit more. So I would highly encourage us to look at the adaptive technology for our special ed population with that money.
So we have a limit with phase one. It ends June 30th. There's a limit on the money there. Now, obvi, perhaps if there's money remaining at the end of phase one, it gets piled into phase two, I don't know. But one of the things that they're still looking at is potentially positions. The federal government and the state are saying no, but the county is saying that they are potentially thinking about even a position being funded. And, and that's where, we're not going to have the nurse leader in our regular, in our final budget. That's probably going to be a cut, but we might be able to put that in, in phase two as a COVID-19 expense and request. So, but in terms of technology, we may need to, we may want to hurry that up and put together a request and get it, it has to go through the town. It can't come from the district. And the way that Tom O'Brien explained it to me is that we would not split it up to the three towns and allocate, you know, like assessments and have each town submit separately, but work and have one town do the application, go through the application process to try to get that funding and then bring it back into the district.
Okay, so this would be work for a joint meeting potentially?
Yes.
Okay.
We would have to move quick if we want to do this before June 30th.
Agreed. So I, I think with, with some of the ideas you put on the table for, for medical equipment, for cleaning supplies, for technology, and with my two cents for the adaptive technology, we have some administrators that we can, we can tap on the shoulder and say, we know you have a ton of work, but this could be some of those important items. And then we could maybe come back and have a Union 31 Silver Lake joint meeting to discuss it. So we could all be together and making this decision, since it's going to benefit all of the towns and all of the schools. And yeah, Gordon, definitely we can wrap the town leadership into those conversations too, once we get some of those ideas from, you know, I, I'm thinking about reaching out to Steve Bello. You know, I'm thinking of reaching out to Marie Grable and then, you know, we can reach out to our nurses and our wellness committee and really put some heads together and come up with a good list. Let the experts do, do the heavy lifting on that. So we have legitimate items to put on the list. All right. Great point, Eric. Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
So Mike, as the chair of Union 31, I'll reach out to you and we can start to coordinate a time that might work for us to meet up to talk about some of the COVID-19 monies.
Yes, of course.
All right, buddy. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns from the committee on COVID-19 emergency? I see none. So we are at the end of our agenda. We did leave ourselves the option to go back into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiations and I'm going to exercise that roll call now. So I am making a motion for us to adjourn from regular session to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations with the Silver Lake Education Association, only return to regular session for the purposes of adjournment. So effectively, this will end the open portion of tonight's meeting. Do I have a second?
Show move. This is Leslie Ann.
Thank you, Leslie Ann. And we are going to do a roll call and yeah, Gordon, I'll give you from 9:15 to get there if you need a couple of seconds. So, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Paula.
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes, if we can keep it brief.
Yep, Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie Ann.
Yes.
All right, Eric?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you, everybody, tonight for your participation. We appreciate it. We'll be back here next week at 7:30 on Thursday. Thank you very much.